No, because your name already has spoken.
Yep.
Yes.
That's tight.
This is what's involved.
If we have four. We got a choice of six.
Evening, everyone. It's 6:30. I'll start this Marion City Council meeting.
Mr. Barr?
Present.
Mr. Ratliff?
Present.
Mr. Schaubert?
Here.
Ms. Lang?
Here.
Mr. T. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Present.
Mr. R. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mrs. Stoneberg?
Present. We'll begin with the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. If I have Mr. Jeff Bush, Pastor Jeff Bush. I don't see him. So I might need a volunteer to be a sent to the location.
I will.
All right. Mr. Perez, thank you.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight as we about to have this city council meeting to decide things for the future of Marion, Ohio, what would be best, what would not be best. We just pray that your presence would be with us tonight. God, that we would discuss things in a peaceful, orderly way and that things would get worked out for the best for the city. We thank you for the blessings that you have given all of us that we may not even be aware of and we just pray, Lord Jesus, that your peace would come upon this city, this state, and this nation, and this world. Amen.
One delusion. To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since tonight we have so many public hearings, I just want to remind everyone that we need to just have one person speaking at a time and that includes people, you know, in the public in front of us and also, well, that would be, oh, phones. If you'll silence your phones. Thank you. Start with the summary of proceedings. Mr. T. Smith?
Make a motion. We approve the summary of proceedings.
Motion to approve and a second from Ms. Lang?
I have a correction.
Okay. Do I have a second from anybody?
Can you make a correction?
Let's do that, yeah.
Page five, line 10, the first 2023 should say 2022.
I've talked to the clerk about some other clerical errors, so.
That's the only correction I had I could, I saw.
Did you have other errors?
I had some things like monies that came out looking strange and some. Home phones.
If you have talked to the clerk about some changes that need to be made, I would suggest that we let those be made and let these ride and pass them, just pass a double set at the next meeting.
You can do that.
That way, those can be made and.
Okay. So, Mr. Smith, you want to withdraw now?
Sure, I'm withdrawing my.
Okay.
But for the future, our clerical errors really necessary to hold up.
It depends on what they are and I don't know, so.
Understood.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, item, full business. Item number one, ordinance 2025-0032.
Ordinance amending part of a public alley 13 feet in width along the east and south sides of Lot 8867 in the Ozgood addition of City of Marion as recorded in Plan Book Three, page 104, Marion County, State of Ohio, and retaining permanent easement rights.
Mr. Barr, it comes from your committee. Read the sentence.
Yep, it comes out of Planning Commission with an 8-0 recommendation, a 2-0 recommendation to approve from the Streets and Sewers. I have nothing to add. Questions, like applicant is here, everybody over there is satisfied with the agreement they've come to. I believe the city is satisfied.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and, yeah, this is our third reading and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. At 6:35. Questions or remarks from anyone else on council? From the public? Hearing none. Well, close the public meeting. Also at 6:35. What's your counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve and a second from Mr. T. Smith?
Best placed.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number two, ordinance 2025-008, commercial district changes to code.
Yes.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
Ordinance amending zoning codes, sections 1143.012, use regular regulations in the C2 community shopping district, piramiding into the C3, C4, and C5 commercial districts to include adult-use cannabis dispensaries, recreational marijuana sales.
All right, this here comes out of the zoning and annexation committee with a 3-0 recommendation to approve. This is the third reading. We also have, I have no other comments on this myself, but we can open now to a public hearing.
Yep. At 6:37. Any concerns or questions from the public? Or anyone else on council? Hearing none. Move along. Mr. R. Smith?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve from Mr. R. Smith and a second for Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next to item number three, ordinance 2025-009, ordinance amending zone code R3 in commercial districts for recovery housing.
Ordinance amending existing Marion City code 1137.011, use regulation in the R3 multifamily district and section 1143.0123A to C3, Central Core and 1143.014AC-4, Central Frame District, business districts to address recovery housing.
Mr. Prater?
Yes, this here comes out of the zoning and annexation committee. There's a 3, a 0 recommendation to approve. This is the third reading. I myself don't have anything else to add to this and if it's okay, we could have our public hearing.
6:30. Public hearing is open. We'll discussion our questions. Hearing none. Move along. And Mr. Rollins?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Rollins has a motion to approve and Mr. Prater the second?
Yep.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously again. Item number four, ordinance 2025-010 to amend zoning new definitions, 2025.
Ordinance amending zoning code 1123.01, definitions to add definitions for opioid treatment programs, office-based opioid treatment programs, recovery housing levels 1 through 3, recreational and/or use cannabis and recreational use adult-use cannabis dispensaries.
All right, this also comes out of the zoning and annexation committee with a 3-0 recommendation to approve and this is the third reading. And I myself have nothing else to add to this and.
Okay, I'm gonna move you on into the public hearing at 6:40. Any questions or concerns from the public? Anything else from council? All right. Hearing none. 6:40. Mr. Rollins?
Motion to approve.
Thank you and Mr. R. Smith, that's all your answers.
Second.
The second. All righty.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance 2025-010. Annexation item five, ordinance 2025-015. Ordinance amending zoning existing definitions.
Ordinance amending zoning code, section 1123.01, definitions to update definitions of family and tourist home.
Mr. Prater?
Yes, this comes, this started out with city planning and it then went to the zoning annexation committee with a 3-0 recommendation to approve and this is the third reading. I myself have nothing to add to this and.
6:41, well marked at a, the beginning of a public hearing. Any questions or statements from the public? Okay, hearing none. 6:42. Mr. R. Smith?
Move to approve, please.
A motion to approve.
Second.
And a second for Mr. T. Smith.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Ordinance is approved unanimously. Item number six, ordinance 2025-036, office institutional changes to code 2025, ordinance for opioid treatment.
Ordinance amending zoning code 1139.01, use regulations in OI and institutional district to include opioid treatment programs and office-based opioid treatment facilities.
All right.
Prater?
Yes, this started out in the city planning and then we're going to zoning and annexation committee with a 3-0 recommendation to approve. This is the third reading. And I have myself at this time have nothing to add.
Mr. Neff?
Oh, Mr. Neff?
Yeah, I, first of all, I apologize for being late to the game on this. I kind of sat back and didn't say a whole lot, partially because I live in an OI district. My home is in an OI district. I waited till maybe today to talk to my neighbors and I've spoken with four neighbors who all don't understand why we would want to add this to the OI district. If I could ask Evelyn if she could just describe the physical founders of that OI district that I'm referring to on East Center Street. But specifically, there are a few OI districts in, in the city of Marion and some of them seem to be suited for this. I'm not sure that the, the specific OI district that I'm referring to would. It's about a three-block swath on East Center Street and of those, there's maybe, I don't know, 30 homes there. The majority of those are single-family homes, the majority of those are owner-occupied homes with a few rentals sprinkled in and out of it.
So Evelyn, we're on this regional planning. What I'm gonna pass around here, I guess I'll take it back to City Planning Commission. We did have two different meetings on it because the first one, our thought was office and institutional. We had a second meeting saying office institutional and apartment. Again, just trying to make sure everybody at that, the first meeting, we didn't have as many in attendance. We wanted to make sure the full board had some discussion of whether or not the opioid treatment facilities would go into any place where there was residential. In this case, it's office institutional apartment. It does allow for a variety of housing, including apartment. So what Mr. Neff is referring to, much of the office and institutional and office institutional apartment are kind of the area livelihood, the hospitals, you know, for example. That's kind of typically what we would think is in that office institutional apartment or office institution. And during our discussions at city planning, it was pretty well established that the thought that the treatment facilities are a medical, you know, treatment office, you're saying has a medical treatments. So that's what I thought is something that allowed the office and institutions to be appropriate. The area which he's referring to, you'll see this, and it'll kind of come into play a little bit with a rezoning that will come in the future, but a lot of the major thoroughfare, so here is Center Street and in particular, I think he's, the area he's referring to is here. So a lot of the major thoroughfares, as they've changed over time, you know, and I'm gonna say Center Street, Main Street, Delaware, have a tendency to be a little bit, you know, mixed bag of actual physical uses as well as zoning districts. It might go from your downtown type of district into a more general commercial and maybe bob in and out of residential and back in, you know. I can't say why it was it was done that way. It was quite likely that they just followed what the main uses were at the time in the city because that would make sense or we all know there's a lot of offices that are in older, large homes, you know. So that's kind of this area in question where he feels that that's sort of a maybe neighborhood-based OIA is a lot different than Marion County. So I guess the point that if you're opposed to having it in that office institutional apartment, if that makes you uncomfortable, then you may want to amend only to allow it in the office institution. If you think that it's by the way it is, it may be another way to handle some of the residents, particularly on Center Street because for instance, we have a pending application that's come out of city planning to dezone something from the OIA in that very area to commercials because they want to have commercials because they're surrounded by other commercials on both sides of the street and to the, to the west that maybe city planning and council should take a look at actually having them in the map in that section and see is, if it's a bunch of single-family homes, maybe it should just be rezoned to something that's simple family, you know. So again, those are different options, but right now, the way this ordinance is written, it would allow them in both types of zones and you're welcome to take a look if you can see colors.
So Evelyn, I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
So could we pass this as it is and then capture the, that 30 or so families and rezon that and that won't jeopardize anything? I'm sure the period between now and when we get that rezoned, someone could theoretically move in with a treatment, but we can protect those, that, that group of people?
Mr. Neff?
But just as well, we could, we could vote it down and have it come back to council.
If it was completely voted down. Since this is something that came out of city planning, then you need two-thirds to.
Two-thirds or three-quarters.
Whatever, whatever you're. Because this is a text on that, whereas what we're talking about on that strip would be a map.
Right, and I do apologize honestly for.
No, that's okay.
Bringing this on you literally 10, 15 minutes before the meeting.
That's okay.
But the boundaries of this, the specific OI zone that I'm referring to, on the east end would be the Marathon Gas Station and this zone is on both sides of Center Street. So would it stop to the south of Church Street? Would that be the whole block? I can barely, I can't.
In that, I believe Church.
I tried to use GIS today.
I think Church Street also has a lot of those. It weaves in and out the same on both sides of that center to church because both of those major corridors. They vary slightly somehow. I'll show you here. Sorry, and this, only way to get it all on one map is at this scale, but so this is Center Street and then. This is Church Street. So they tend to be, they bound from center to Huber or wherever the railroad tracks is here kind of. And then here, here's center, right, dead center is kind of the way that. So you see that, all the major corridors, the same kind of happens here on Main Street as you get them hugging both sides of the main thoroughfare. Go about one block in and then they start to change. So this one would be, I think, Church and then here's maybe Huber over.
Mr. T. Smith?
Evelyn, if you don't mind, could this potentially be amended so that the OI is conditional use in the OI district?
Oh, that's a good idea. You could.
Okay. I'm not sure how everybody else would feel about that.
That way it has to go through appeals and then each opportunity you get to, you know, city planning would look at it that way if that area is nothing like this where it's maybe a little more single-family versus behind Smith Clinic, you know, that gives a chance to.
Mr. Neff?
It still just seems to me like the different OIA, OI zones in the city are not equal. This zone is a very different makeup than the zone in the south part of town. And, you know, I can speak, I personally have lived in that block in this zone for 50 years. I've lived there for 50 years. Right now, there's one business that operates in that zone and they're a hearing center, a doctor. I'm gonna say 10, 20 years ago, there was on, right almost next door to me, there was a psychiatric office and then down to the west a block, there was an insurance agent that was there for some time, but. And, and that whole strip of those three blocks, I don't know that there's ever been more than one business operating in that, in that particular zone. Before I was born, you know, the 1940s and 50s, the home that I lived in next door had a doctor's office in the basement, but it just seems to me like these zones aren't equal. I mean, this, this OI zone and the other OI zone are not equal. And I do apologize for bringing this up at this late moment.
Okay, well, 6:53, we do have a public hearing. For other commentary?
I believe the reason we're trying to clean up some of this language is because we're facing litigation right now over rehab or, I don't know what we're calling them, treatment facility. Is that correct?
This.
Sort of, yeah. Like we're trying to get rid of one and they're trying to get us for unfair housing or something like that.
Mr. Schaubert?
If I am recalling correctly, this cleans up language for the Church Street.
Yes.
Location.
Because I know we were trying to work on the houses too, so I, I don't know which one is which.
And that was dealt with in the definitions.
Yes.
That we passed previously.
Okay. My thought is that this has been ongoing since February and Mr. Neff, you really did have a chance to talk to your neighbors before now and if your neighbors were terribly concerned about it, I think that they would be up for it now.
I would just urge council to turn this down. I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm one vote, so that's all I have.
Ms. Lang?
Can we amend it to conditional like Mr. Schaubert?
Quick.
Mr. Rollins?
Uh, we would have to come back around for another public meeting, right? Another.
Does that mean you have to start again as?
It would be amended, so it would be.
It would be amended, so this would be the first reading, yeah.
So I guess the question is sending it back or amending it and taking it back to a first read?
Or you could pass it.
Or pass it.
Mr. Ratliff?
So just, if you don't mind, in my, just trying to understand where everybody's coming from, when you say that the, that they're not equal, I guess I don't understand if you can tell me where the other ones are that you think are better.
The one that's completely different would be the Crescent Heights area, the south part of town, behind Smith Clinic. That whole Crescent Heights Road is also an OI. So back there, there's multifamily, there's office buildings, there's apartment buildings. It's, to me, it's a totally, they seem to be totally different zones to me, if you follow my saying.
In my.
There's a longer mat.
In my, I don't know, way of thinking about it, if I were to drive on Crescent Heights, although it seems to be primarily apartments, it's much higher residential percentage than driving down Center Street. And on Center Street, I think of, you know, gas stations and flower shops and, you know. And I, I don't even think of it being like a hugely residential area. I think of, and, you know, I don't know what the exact count is, but I think center of more business than I do residential. So I, I don't, so I'm just, I'm asking you to just help me understand.
Yeah, well, this would be the zone between what you're thinking about as business, so it would almost bound, boundary on the one end with the Auto Zone and the Drive-Thru and then if you head east from there, you'll run into a pocket of three, three blocks of residential, then you'll come to the gas station, there's a marathon station, there's a church on the other side of the street. And once you pass Fahy Bank, there might be one or two businesses on the north side, but that's almost all residential as well, out to the city limit. But there's a, there's a pocket of residential there.
Question or comment from?
And like I said, I've only lived there for 50-some years on that street.
Hi, Kelly Haynes, 160 Sharpless Court. My mother has owned a home there in this same area for, oh, how long was it, Mr. Walker? It's been a while, right? That she owned that, that house there, it was taken from me, unfortunately. I lost the home. I think that was about the time Marion City Police attached a man's name to my name and I wasn't able to be employed and I lost the house. Anyways, back to what we're talking about here, it sounds to me like what we're saying is basically not my mother. With what's going on in our community, we can't have that mind frame, okay? Out at Crescent Heights, that area is predominantly hooded, right? Out at Crescent Heights, that area is predominantly hooded, right? And so we don't want it in our neighborhood either, but it's what's going on in our community. So you got to deal with it. You've been through enough readings, you had your opportunity. Can we pass this and move on? I think just needed, that was the time.
Once again, I've stayed in my position. I have nothing further to say. I just urge council to disapprove of this, and I apologize for the late notice.
Thank you. Anything else from the public? Public hearing, six fifty-nine.
And I just want to make sure, Ian, this is for an office? So it's not for housing, it's not, it's for...
An office treatment.
Okay, so, I mean, it, so it wouldn't, other than the stigma of what it is, I don't see the difference. You said you had a, you know, you've had a doc, you've had, I think, you said maybe you said a dentist, you've had an insurance agent, you've had a counseling center.
Over the course of fifty years, there's maybe been one business active in that zone, and even going back before I lived there, there was a foot doctor there, but that's not a business, I don't see that as a business district. And if you speak to the residents of the street, they don't see it that way either. That's, you know, once I said, this is my opinion, and, you know, I apologize I came with this late, but I'm the one who has to go back, and the neighbors are going to call me and say, hey, what's going on? And that's where I'm at. I didn't speak to all the neighbors, but everyone was resounding in the fact that they did not feel that this was the right thing to do. And just to expand on that more, I know there's talk of changing that whole three-block section to just a C district, and all of my neighbors are against that as well. And just between now and whenever that comes up, I guess I got to get out and talk to more of my neighbors. So, thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
If I'm looking at the right little island of OIA, there is three blocks that is, could, that abuts our two district. So we could pass this as is and then immediately come back and fix that zoning. And I'm comfortable and confident that we can get that done and protect those residential homes.
Mr. Shaw, I'm not sure what, what zoning we would amend it to.
R2, R2, because it's...
We have an existing business operating in there under the OI zoning right now, so I wouldn't want to affect that existing business.
Well, I don't think it would if we would, this is my understanding of the zoning, if we was to change it, if that, that business would leave, then someone could not fill in behind it. We would not be zoning them out of business.
Correct. Right, they would become a legal non-conforming use. They're allowed to stay, and then if it changes to another business, it goes to the Board of Appeals to just make sure it wasn't anything of higher magnitude than what was previously allowed there, even as OIA, which is the case. So there are some ways for that to handle, or depending on where it is, if it has its own end or something, maybe we take them out and make them something else.
Mr. Barr?
Evelyn, is this something city planning would take up to get on this, to rezone that pocketed residential?
Yes, and some of that is because there's already a request in that same pocket for commercial. And as we started to discuss, and that's on tonight's agenda, that will be coming their way through committee, but city planning can also discuss it and then take a deeper dive, go really see which houses are where and, you know, what all's in there, and so make a recommendation on addressing future rezon.
So this potential commercial business that you're talking about would be in this pocket?
Yes.
So then we probably should be careful about...
That one as well.
Yeah.
That is a request to rezone to C5, which is what, as you see, it's OIA, C5, C5, a little bit of mixture more coming across the street from that.
Oh, Mr. Prater, and now the last one.
Yeah, so you're saying that the, we could, best thing possibly to do would be just send it back to city planning and fix everything up for that other, I think that other place was it on Center Street also.
That'll have, you can't really send it back, I mean, you have to deal with this case, but that'll have to be a new case.
That would be a new, but I'm saying that with this here, to amend that to like a residential area that Mr. Neff's talking about, would it go back to city planning? Or can we, we, like Shaw, Mr. Shaw, we said we amend it here as a non-con...
Okay. The one thing you can amend here would be as Mr....
Smith.
You have two Smiths here, regional planning, we have two Thaddeus, so I have to remember who you are. But, so that's something you can amend, because again, we're talking about text right now. We're changing the code itself. So you can either say, we don't want it in the OI, not the OIA. You could amend it to say, if it's going to be in the OIA, it's conditional use, because that's a good idea. That way, if you have those OIA's that are kind of a different character, you, the Board of Appeals gets to say, is this more like a hospital character, or is this more like the residential? Because you're probably, you might not be the only pilot of, you know, of that. So that's what you can do now with regard to the text, in order to actually rezone some of those map changes. That'll have to be a whole new initiation. It can be initiated by city planning, so we can kind of follow behind this as swiftly as possible. But they'll still have to be two different issues.
Mr. T. Smith?
I do not think it would be a bad idea to amend this to be conditional use, because the OI districts, a lot of them have a lot of residential areas within them, so... With that being said, I'll make a motion to amend this ordinance to read in the OI district, conditional use. The OIA on conditional use.
Just one point, I think we do have to come out of the public hearing before we can start making motions.
We did.
We brought us out of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down.
Six fifty-nine.
Okay. I apologize.
No problem. Mr. Neff?
I'll second that amendment.
We have a motion and a second to amend. Mr. Ratliff?
So, I don't know. My, my overall feeling on this, and I think grown stronger as I've sat here, is that every time that we have any type of facility that comes, we have neighbors in that area that come and say, we don't want that here. We want it on another part of town, or another town, or out in the county, or we want it. And the bottom line is, nobody wants it there, and there's a stigma with, with a business like this. And the fact of the matter is, we need more of that here instead of less. And we have problems here that we, we need as many of these as we can get right now. And we've, this has been zoned this way for fifty years. And it's not until this type of business, which really is just a treatment office, is allowed to be there, that people are now saying, we don't want it here. And, you know, it, it got consideration from the Planning Commission, which was five to zero. It got consideration from the Zoning and Annexation Committee, which went out three to zero. And now, and I, and I don't mean for this to come off smart aleck, and it probably will, but because we have a person that talked to four neighbors, we're willing to throw away the consideration of everybody that has looked at that and make everything go back to, to the drawing board, because four neighbors don't want it there. And it just, to me, it just, it doesn't, that's going to be every neighborhood in this entire city, and we, we can't start setting that precedence here.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to amend in a second.
So, just so I understand what this amendment will do, and so everyone understands what it will do, anywhere the zoning is OIA, if this treatment facility wants to do business in Marion, it will be conditional no matter where it's at. So this not in my neighborhood argument will come up every time a treatment facility wants to come up, come in, in town. So if, so I don't know why we would do that, especially when we're going to look at this three-block area for another commercial use and, and change, changing the zoning to begin with. So I think we're going to complicate things, and that not in my neighborhood argument will grow louder and stronger, and, and we just need to pass it as it is and promptly follow up with changing the zoning.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, completely agree. And the whole reason we're here is because of the not in my neighborhood argument. That's what led us to change the, that's what led us to change the zoning, to set the standards to begin with. So let's get this passed and get it over with.
Well, right now, we have a motion and a second.
I, I guess I wanted Evelyn to hear this, but I have a clarification from Mr. Shaw. You said OIA. This is just OI and institutional. It does not cover office institutional apartments.
It does.
It does, too.
I thought the Planning Commission specifically took the apartments out.
No, they put it in, they, at the second meeting, if we were... That was the why we tabled it to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then they, they wanted to make sure that they were comfortable with putting it in, OIA, and that is the way it went.
It's bold italicized letters, section I, or L.
Which of the thirty pages?
L, I don't know my alphabet. It's an L.
Yeah, it is a L.
Okay. Sorry, I was reading the top of it, my...
Right, I think at first, that's where the first change is in OI, and then I believe this is German, up into OIA.
Yeah, it's on page six, I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to ask since it was being discussed, there's...
Okay, well, before we move on to, or back to...
You have a...
Yes?
You have a motion in a second on the floor.
We have a motion and a second to amend, so we need to take a roll on that.
Mr. Barr?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Lang?
No.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Uh, no.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Three, six.
Three, six. We will not be amending. So next, we need to take a vote on the, we have a motion on as is, ordinance. Sorry, Mr. Rollins?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Rollins, and a second from Mr. Ratliff.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
No.
Orders nine twenty-five, zero four one.
Ordinance vacating part of a sixteen-point-five-foot public alley lying west of lots forty-three and forty-four and east of lots fifty-three and fifty-four. Original plaque of the village, now city of Marion, plaque book one, page three, and retaining permanent easement rights.
Mr. Barr comes out of your floor.
Come out of Streets and Sewers with a two-oh recommendation to approve. We've had this for quite some time. We're waiting on a survey to come in. It's come in. This will be the second reading. We have a public hearing scheduled for May twelfth. Unless there's any other question, I consider this the second reading.
Can you remind me where this is at?
This is right about the overpass behind the Johnson.
It's the old Sulky Company.
Yeah.
Thought we did that.
They didn't have the survey.
Oh, okay. We got survey now.
So it's, it's just the section that's identified right here?
Between the two buildings.
Okay.
Prevent that from being a cut through, a lot of graffiti.
Yep.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Any other member of council or the public?
Between, between main and street, from main and state, and then in between the tracks?
The two sets of tracks where Johnson Supplies is at.
The crux?
Yes.
The old, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah. Just past, just past that headed east. And so it's two buildings just right across from the...
Tracks?
Okay.
And there's a cut through there that...
Well, I used the one cut through by Young's, and I wanted to make sure you were cutting off Forest Street. It is what I wanted to make sure was...
You got to get it right. It'll just dump you out under the overpass.
Okay. I just, I know what you're talking about now. Okay, so you have to go right to...
Johnson Supply is here.
Yeah, exactly where it is.
And it's kind of between the railroad tracks, so...
That alley is not being given a cut through anyway. A lot of problems.
Another question from the public?
Could I ask a reason for that being...
Namon.
Namon, restate your name, please.
Kelly Haynes, 160 Sharpless Court. So I live right there off the tracks. My uncle Wright Sheffield owns the home there. It's at the actual, is a historic home, the old rail yardhouse. And so we have to bring our trailer and our camper and everything through there, and, you know, very narrow street Sharpless Court is. And so I just wanted to know what was the purpose of blocking off the tracks there. And then also, I think because of that fire that just happened the other night, that's also how the fire trucks are able to get through.
I think you're mistaken where, where we're talking about. It's a narrow strip between Johnston and the old Sulky building.
I wanted to show you, so this is Main Street. This is State Street, the overpass. So it's this little area between those two railroad tracks. So I think you at Sharpless would be maybe like over here off the, you know, a couple blocks that way.
Okay, so it's not that set of tracks?
Right, right. So it's just this little bit here. This used to be called, you know, Sulky. And it's kind of over behind the courthouse here.
Okay, okay, so it's a different set. All right, great, thank you very much.
Anything else? We'll leave it as a second reading, and we have a public hearing scheduled for that May twelfth. Next is Resolution twenty twenty-five zero one zero.
Resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Benjamin Moore as a member of the Marion City Planning Commission.
Mayor Collins?
Well, I think this came up while I was out of town, and they'd asked for more in-depth resume from each person that we're going to talk about tonight. Benjamin Moore was recommended for the sixth ward by Ron Prater, and I spoke with him a couple of different times and emailed back and forth. He's a lifelong resident of Marion, currently works at the Marion City Schools, involved in Royal Family Kids Camp, Marion Christian Center, volunteers at the Palace, union representative for the city schools, just a lifelong resident that cares about his city and is involved in a lot of extracurricular things in the community, and that's why I recommended him for city planning.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Barr?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings.
We have a motion to suspend the three readings, and a second from Mr. T. Smith.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Well, we have a minority no. Mr. Rollins, Ratliff, would you like to clarify anything about that?
So I had requested the, the information that we have in front of us tonight. It did take a little bit of time to get it, and I want to do some additional looking into it. And, you know, honestly, with the holiday and everything, I didn't get that time. This is an appointment that goes through the end of 2030, so I think we should make sure we have the right...
Mr. Rollins, Ratliff, would you like to clarify anything about that?
So I had requested the, um, the information that we have in front of us tonight. It did take a little bit of time to get it and I want to do some additional looking into it. And, you know, honestly, with the holiday and everything, I didn't get that time. This is an appointment that goes through the end of 2030, so I think we should make sure we have the right, we should do our due diligence and have the right, and have the right person.
Okay, well, I am going to side with the minority in this one. Let's move on to the next. Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-one-one.
Resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Bob Goyer to serve as the fifth member of the Board of Directors of the Marion Port Authority.
Again, this is another vacancy that we needed to appoint to the Port Authority. This is actually a shared appointment by the city and the county, so this would also have to be approved by the county. My understanding that they are inclined to do that once we do that. Bob Goyer sent in his resume that was presented to all council. Also another lifelong resident of Marion, currently works at Kingston, very involved in the community and I think would be a good appointment to, to that board.
I just want to say that, I mean, I can personally say that I've known Bob Goyer for a number of years and he is a huge asset to this community in all the ways and that he has been involved. Former city council member and an important member of this community and I think he'd be a valuable asset to this commission, to the Port Authority. So I just want to put that out there. I feel like, you know, we should move on this. There shouldn't be any questions on Bob Goyer.
Mr. T. Smith?
Make a motion, we suspend the three reading rules.
A motion to suspend the three readings from Mr. T. Smith and a second from Mr. Prater.
Yep.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
You know, again, we, we did get the information that I asked for and one of my concerns is that, you know, that I believe this is a member of media who writes, who writes news articles. And I actually have a call-out to Marion County Now and I have not received a call-back. But, and maybe I'm completely wrong, but I think even at the last meeting, I did get confirmation from at least one other member that said that they believed the person was too. And on the information, that is, you know, that is not listed on the resume, which, you know, you can read into that or not. I, you know, but I just, you know, I, I think that we should know all the information and I, before that we vote on the person.
Somebody brought that up to me after the last meeting and it was a definite no that he was not. It was confirmed with him, so I don't know why I still am...
That he was not?
That he was part of the media.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Goyer today and he mentioned writing something for, I'm sorry, Kingston, is it? Which of course would not really qualify as media.
Kingston Newsletter.
Right. I agree with you there. But he also mentioned the Marion Now. Is that, am I saying that right? Marion County Now? And so I, you know, I mentioned that to him and that that's the part that, you know, I knew that had, he and I had talked about it a long time ago. He said, well, a couple of things came up in the conversation and he knew we were going to be looking at this tonight, but he wasn't able to be here. So I understand Mr. Ratliff's question and I would, once again, I think we should defer to the minority needing information. Yes?
If I may ask, or could council ask the first assistant law director? Does that, would this present a conflict if this individual is in fact a member of the media and being on this board? I think that would be the question that would be asked once this confirmed or denied.
It's a complicated question and I think there is a definite potential and our office could look into it and get you guys that information, that if he continues to be a part of a newsletter or a webpage that gives out the news, if that would create a conflict by putting him on one of those?
Okay.
You know, the safe answer would be yes, but I, I'm not saying that that is the answer. It would be a complicated answer, which is, is he, and then this board can inquire if he's willing to cut ties with that in order to accept this position.
And could we have that answer for the next council meeting on our third reading?
On the May twelfth?
Yes, I believe that's the date, yes.
Yep. We'll have it.
Yes, we had a little bit of that kind of discussion I did with him today, just because I was curious and he, he seemed, I mean, again, I didn't record it or anything, but he seemed willing to not write for the Marion County, the Marion, yeah, Marion County Now, you know, once in this position. I don't think he'd be willing to give up the Kingston Newsletter, but I doubt that that would have anything to do with, well, with the other. Mr. T. Smith?
Are either one of these commissions paid positions, Mr. Mayor?
No.
No? I just kind of assumed that since they were mayoral appointments, that you would choose the best person for the job. So I would support it and I'm not sure why it's held up either, so.
Mr. Ratliff, I may ask you, is, is there still considered a conflict of interest if it's not a paid position?
Well, I, I mean, I think we got a...
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the other...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Payment, I don't think, is anything that qualifies or disqualifies you.
Okay.
If you're part of the media and you have an outlet that is representing something from Marion County Now and then you're also on the board, whether it's a paid position or not doesn't determine whether you have a conflict or not based on the fact whether you receive compensation or not.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Ratliff?
So one, just a question that I would like some clarification on, and whether you agree that this would be a disqualifier or not, or whether you agree that this is a potential conflict or not, I think we should all kind of have our antennas up that we were told tonight it was confirmed he was not a member and then we were told that he was. And so if I could just ask the mayor, who confirmed that he was not a member of media and did not work for Marion County Now?
That information came from my secretary, Linda. Linda had the conversation after you guys had the last meeting and she informed me that he was not part of the media.
Okay.
So maybe she doesn't consider Marion County Now part of the media. Or maybe she didn't know he was part of that, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I can't say I did not know that.
Mr. Neff?
I just want to say thanks to both of these people for putting themselves out there for these positions. I think they're excellent choices for both spots. Among the many things a mayor has to do, he has to make a lot of these appointments. And I know, we talked about institutional knowledge, so my first four years on council with the previous administration, there were a number of positions that needed to be filled on various boards. And shame on me for not stalling it out quite like this, but I did respectfully ask for resumes because typically they weren't given. So we do have them now, I appreciate that and just going forward if we could do that. But I could say all the appointments in my first four years on term never, never went through this much rigmarole to get it done. So once again, thank you to both of these members that have put themselves out there for these positions.
Thank you. Mr. Prater?
Yeah, I'd like to thank what he said. I wouldn't have even recommended Benjamin Moore to the mayor if he wasn't highly exemplary. If he wasn't highly exemplary, I would not have mentioned it. And I think that Bob Goyer, I know years ago, he helped me out a lot when I needed it and he was right there, standing behind. He's been a part of this community a long time and these things are being held up and these people have put themselves out there and I find it disturbing.
Mr. Riff?
So I will address this. And, you know, the Ohio Revised Code sets up the way that legislation is supposed to be run. And legislation is supposed to receive three public readings so that the public has three opportunities to come to their elected members and say what they, what they think about any particular issue. We saw tonight that a councilperson in item number six came on the third reading and wanted something changed. Now, it wasn't changed, but now, two items later, the same councilperson is saying they can't believe that something isn't, isn't being passed on the second reading, when again, two items earlier, they wanted a change at the third reading. And it's only on special circumstances are we supposed to pass things before its third reading? Because what we're doing is we are cheating the public out of opportunities to come and talk to us about certain, certain issues. So I don't see any disrespect, I don't see any problem with just following the way that we're supposed to legislate and having three readings on any certain, on any certain issue.
It's inappropriate, please. Thank you. Yes, did you want to add something, please?
Pam Rich, three-thirty-two, Main Street. I understand Mr. Ratliff's, you know, reservations in some way, but you also said because of the holiday and that you did not have time. So I think that to hold up these appointments because you didn't have time in your schedule to look at that, I, I feel like that that is definitely not good to have to hold it up when everybody else is going for it because of your time and having it appropriately. I've known Mr. Goyer for a while. He works very hard for love my seniors. He is advocate very much for Marion and anybody that he could help and he would definitely be an asset on this committee. So that, as a resident, that's my opinion.
Thank you. So you have to look at this area?
Yeah, just, you know, once again, I thank these gentlemen, both of these gentlemen for putting themselves out there and in two weeks, I feel confident that we will appoint them. But just revises history, four years of the previous administration, never once did we go more than one read, never once on an appointment.
Yeah.
Not once.
Thank you for the history. All right. Well, my decision stands and we will... Second reading?
Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see.
I appreciate what I'm hearing tonight as far as Mr. Ratliff saying, you know what, I didn't have the time to review this, but is concerned for the community's sake in having the readings and doing the due diligence and checking and making sure that, you know, this is appropriate. I think if there's more accountability, more accountability is what I'm calling for as a person that's been subject to some, really, a lot of problems in this community as far as clerical errors going and judgment injuries, you know? These things can be addressed if we slow down. We say, hey, I took on too much. He was on vacation, he acknowledged that, or whatever happened. I didn't have time. But we gotta wait a minute, slow down before we move forward and this is, how many, like until the thirty? We, we gotta slow down. Let him look it over. If it's, if, it's not going to change anything, if these are the right people, then he's gonna get to that point and say, this is the right person for the job and then we can look for it. But just take a minute and pause. Maybe there's another candidate, maybe there's not. How, I, you know, sometimes we appoint our friends and they're not the best people just because they're good to us and they work.
We need to stop the vote.
My friend is out, okay? My friends are going to be good to me. That doesn't mean that my friends are going to be good to somebody else or for that position. We have to slow down and make the right decisions. Due diligence is necessary. That is the reason why Marion is in a position of moving too fast. We haven't slowed down. We've made some mistakes. Let's correct these mistakes by slowing down and making sure we're doing the right thing. Then we have to go back and correct the problem and spend hours and hours and it's just enough. I don't think it's going to take too long to get this appointment if we do that.
Okay. We're doing that Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-eleven-four as a separate reading. Brings us to ordinance twenty-two-five-zero-four-five.
Ordinance designating depositories of public monies to the city of Marion and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Lang?
This is the second read. It came out of the Finance Committee with a two-One recommendation to approve. Mr. Reese is here to answer any questions. I don't have anything to add at this time.
Questions or concerns? Moving on to new business. Ordinance twenty-two-five-zero-four-seven.
Ordinance vacating a public street situated in the city of Marion, Marion County, state of Ohio, and known as being in the southwest quarter of section twelve, twenty-one, township five west, range fifteen east, being part of outlots four-twenty and four-twenty-one and being part of Hoyle Street right-of-way area as recorded in Horatio Hoyle's first edition, plaque book three, page one-fourteen of Marion County Records, state of Ohio, and retaining permanent easement rights.
Mr. Barr?
Come out of streets and sewers with a three-O recommendation to reject. I believe the engineer, engineer, had a conversation with Councilman...
Smith, Thaddeus Smith.
With ODOT, I think their concern is it's dumping out behind there, so did they have, did they send representative? I'm sorry, I can't see you over there.
I don't think so. Did not send ODOT representative?
I think they were asking us to send it back to committee.
They did by email.
I'm sorry.
They did by email. They, they suggested that we send it back to committee. They're very concerned about the safety situation there. This is, it's funded as a safety project because of the way that Hoyle's dumps out behind the gate, as we're all aware. I did want to bring one comment in this email from one of the consulting engineers. It's Alejandro Chalk is his name, he's with Wolfert, and he says, "The Hoyle's Cuyahoga Approach is completely inside the grade crossing gates and any movement to or from that approach during a train movement would be violating an active grade crossing warning device, which is not an ideal, is not an ideal condition and illegal. Also note that there are side lights equipped on the warning device to cover the Hoyle's Cuyahoga Approach, further emphasizing that the approach is inside the crossing." So it's really just a safety thing, so I think if the council approved this, they, you know, it's, I would, I would like to take the stand that it's, that I disagree with it. I think it's a, it needs to be done as a safety reason. If someone could get stuck there or hit or killed, there is...
Okay, thank you. Mr. R. Smith?
I have a question for the law director.
Yep.
Now that we've had this issue come up and it's a safety issue, if somebody gets hurt there, is it going to be a liability on the city or is it on the individual?
The city can also potentially be liable. And whether that is successful in obtaining that liability is a different story, but you better believe if there's any type of accident that occurs, the city of Marion would be listed with that individual if they should sue in that case. If they file a lawsuit, they're going to attach the city to that because we have the most ability to pay whatever injuries, whatever happened if somebody is killed in that area and it's a safety issue. If we're the ones that passed it, created it, that occurred, we would be attached to it as well. Doesn't mean that we would be liable in it, but it doesn't stop us from being named either.
Mr. Barr?
So there's two separate questions in the case in that matter.
Thank you. Chair recognizes.
Okay.
Mr. Shalhoub, if you, do you feel if we send this back to committee, that there could be some type of compromise? Because we all, I believe all of us up here see the need and the issue over there, and not wanting to close Hoyle Street, but there's gotta be some type, do you feel like we could come to some type of compromise, potentially make that one way, go on west, or another gate, or something? So, do you think that's a possibility?
Yeah, I do. Excuse me, I think anything's a possibility there. I think sending it back to committee, committee would give us the opportunity to have those discussions and possibly come to another solution there, and we'll get the consulting engineer here to further discuss what the other parts of that design are and all that. So, I think, and there's no hurry on this project...
This isn't being done until 26 or 27, right? So, I hate to kick it around like that, but I also wanna make sure that we're doing what's best for the city and the residents on that side of town.
Mr. Shalhoub?
Yeah, so, I don't know if we can send this back to committee, because this is a binding agreement, for lack of a better term, from city planning. This should be from, binding recommendation from city planning, so we can discuss it all we want in committee, but we still have to go with the recommendation, if I'm not mistaken, or override it.
The recommendation to reject?
You would have to override it, yes.
Yeah, because it came out of city planning, where this discussion, I wish it would've happened, because I've been on this since December 13th, and for whatever reason, I could not be heard, and then now we wanna send it back to committee, which, great, let's have discussion, but I don't think we will accomplish anything in city planning or city or in committee. It has to start from city planning, I would believe.
Mr. Waronnis, do you have a response to that?
Pam Rich, 332 Nye Street. And we've talked quite a bit about this, I have been coming in specifically for this issue. I've lived in that area for over 30 years. I know that there have been accidents at different tracks. My first thought is, where you're talking about the liability to the city, does that mean that anybody that decides to walk onto a track when the gate's down, or anybody that crosses over a track can turn around and sue the city? Because I've traveled that way, seen the trains, seen the train lines, and know when there's a train coming, you can still see the guardrail. Also, if you look at a number of tracks in this town, if you look where Shovel City Drinker is, you've got a whole section of tracks right there, the cars go down. It's no different than that little area right there on Hoyle, there's no gates, there's nothing stopping anybody from driving upon this track. But there's a whole stretch of alley you can run right along those tracks, and this is a very small section of people. So, also, we talked about the safety, and I know the mayor spoke that there's been a number of incidents at that crossing, and I'm not doubting you on that, because before social media, a lot of times you didn't hear it if it wasn't in the newspaper. But I'd like to see the statistics on that crossing, how they rank that crossing, how the other crossings in Marion rank also, and I'm sure that everybody here, or 90% of you, have seen somebody go around a guardrail somewhere in Marion with all the crossings when it probably should not have been. They did that by their choice, and that was a decision that they made. So, I ask you, just for the traffic, for the congestion, for the fact that that neighborhood is already struggling on the other side, and that area is struggling, to reconsider this, because that's gonna create even more of a safety hazard on the businesses there. I don't wanna be pumping gas at Motormark going into pay and someone flying through the Motormark parking lot because they're trying to get out of the situation when the trains are on the track for a half an hour. Or driving down some of our city streets on the west end would be, oh, ready to get a lot of local traffic, you know, going down Bennett, blowing through stop signs continually. So, it's gonna create more. So, that, and changing the lights as they're suggesting, what are you gonna do while you're changing the Center Street direction and somebody's sitting on David Street wanting to go left down center? How long are they gonna sit there while they're changing that direction? I think a lot of the discussion is that they think that it's because people want to go and turn left on Hoyle and go over the tracks when the guardrail's down. That is not what we're talking about, we're talking about it being an outlet for turning right behind there. And that way, you can cross over the intersection and go down David, go back down Center, but it gives you that outlet, and you can put quite a few cars in that area and get them off of Center Street while the tracks are blocked for a half hour. But if you do that, there's no way for anybody to get out without making a U-turn. If you take that away, they're gonna be making U-turns because there's nowhere to go or through the businesses. Thank you.
I have to apologize for not having gabbed us into a public hearing, unless you wrote down a number for me, but I appreciate all the commentary and explanations, and so, thank you for taking this issue. And everyone else? Mr. Smith?
Yes, yesterday, I talked to the owner of the drive-thru, and he is very concerned if that's blocked there, because he's afraid that somebody is gonna cut through his lot and the traffic's going different directions, there's people coming out of the drive-thru, and that's his worry, is that if that's blocked off, they're gonna cut through his parking lot, through his area, and there's gonna be traffic accidents on his property. Somebody's liable to get hurt stepping out, so that's his big concern.
Thank you. Mr. Ratliff?
All right, so, tonight, I've heard an idea of sending it back to committee, and I've heard an idea not, and I believe I've heard that the state is who's asked it to go back to committee?
That was just a suggestion.
Okay. And are these the same people that were at the last committee who left?
One, the project manager was here at that meeting, but these are other actual designers.
Right, so, you know, maybe we could've done a better job of scheduling, and maybe when we have this in the future, we should be mindful of if somebody's coming in and a bunch of meetings are set and there's, you know, because we go every five minutes anyway, if you go 6:30, 6:35, if you wanna throw this in at 6:31 and go second, then, you know, it probably would've been better for the people that came from the state for that, but...
When the committee was over, he thought all of it was over.
Okay.
And got up and left.
And, you know, and they're not here tonight, and so, you know, I don't know what sending it back to committee is gonna do for them to communicate with us when we could have a second reading in two weeks and they could come then too. So, that's just...
I think that would be...
I would agree, Mr. Ratliff.
I think we could have them here next, further in two weeks for the second reading, they can present what they have.
Thank you. Mr. Shalhoub?
So, the purpose of these individuals to come is to convince us to close it? Because if that's the case, let's, we have, magically, we have a public hearing on the first reading. How that happens, who knows? So, we have a public hearing, let's suspend the rules, vote this down, let city planning send something back that reflects what the residents want.
If I might, this was put in with several other pieces of legislation that were scheduled for public hearings today, under the thought that it was coming out of Planning Commission, going to committee, and was going to end up being on the third reading. I didn't know it was gonna be held up in committee, it just happened to come out in time, it had been advertised for a public hearing. They were put together to save money, it would've cost us twice as much if I'd have put them in individually.
So, and I appreciate the cost savings, but we have procedures for a reason, and I know this is a ticky tack thing to argue over when our public hearings go out, but we had no clue this would even come out of committee, it was just assumed that it would.
Were you making a motion there, Mr. Shalhoub?
I just, so, I don't wanna waste any more time on this, because if we're just gonna sit and wait on ODOT or whoever to convince us to close it, and I believe there's a consensus that it should not be closed amongst council members, let's reject this, let city planning redo this and bring something that represents or is reflective of the needs and wants down there.
Mr. Waronnis?
I think that would be possible, I'm not 100% sure, but I understand where you're coming from. The other thing would be to ask, I mean, I think ultimately, you're right, in that city planning is where we can get into the weeds on drawing and options to come out, where it's much more difficult to do particularly like a third reading, because if we could ask that when the ODOT representatives come, that they come with some other options and well for discussion. You know, because obviously, they are experts and we want to have safety being primary, because if you're choosing something that's going against something that is deemed a safety issue, that probably does open up, or some liability, because you went against the recommendations or, you know, disallows a safety feature. But if they could come with some options, with tweaks or something, a few options is kinda like we do a lot grant. A, B, and C is something more powerful that still achieves safety and, you know, can we, maybe we need to, maybe they need to acquire some more land in order to make either the U-turn or to make it so that somebody doesn't have to utilize private property to get out of a situation.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Prager?
Yeah, well, you know, working my job, I, last year, especially the last two months, I drove through that part of town a lot, and I can see the use for that Hoyle Street, why people would want it, and, but if you're going up center and you turn to the right and you get trapped, the gates could come down and you're in the middle, but if you were going west, I would see that that would be fine, because it is an outlet. It does allow people, if you closed it down completely, it would kinda restrict some flow of traffic, but if you're just going across, like, you know, you get on Center, you turn left, and then you turn left to go across the tracks and head north, that is a danger, because one time it happened with me, it, you know, I thought, man, the gates just, and, you know, and I've seen it with other car, that was in my own car when I was driving one time. But I see that if it was going west, you could leave it open and it would be safe, make it one way.
Any other comments on this issue? Mr. R. Smith?
I understand this project will not happen until, what, '26, '27? If we pass this, I have a question for the law director again, if we pass this and somebody gets injured or killed between the time we pass it and when the project actually happens, is the city still liable?
If they haven't changed any of the, if the project hasn't occurred yet...
Right.
I wouldn't say that you would be, because the accident didn't occur because of the legislation you passed and the changes were made.
Okay, but it would, it would give us liability...
Does it stop an individual from filing a suit and naming you? It does not.
No.
It does not. And I'm saying, ultimately, I don't think the liability would, because we just passed it and we're waiting for it to happen, and somebody's injured in the meantime, well, it actually didn't get changed.
Right.
So, your legislation wasn't at fault, but it's not gonna stop an individual, because they can name somebody as a potential defendant in any lawsuit and try to get to liability.
Right.
So, we, you know, the city of Marion would be named, any good personal injury attorney's going to name all parties that they can as a potential outlet to seek money to reimburse the client.
Yeah, I was just wondering about, were we liable to be guilty, for lack of a better word?
I think we would be named, just like we would at any other time, but liability would probably favor us better because the changes haven't happened yet.
Okay.
And if the accident occurs after the change is made, and it's deemed the legislation that you passed is the safety issue you created, which is what occurred in this specific instance, that's a better case against the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rich?
Pam Rich, 332 Nye Street. The bottom line really is, which is something we fought against, is we wouldn't have to worry about the traffic getting backed up, we wouldn't have to worry about the safety concern if the tracks were not blocked for the length of time that they are here. So, it all boils down to the tracks not being able to get through, the pile of traffic that are trying to get through, how they're, I mean, down for a half hour, sometimes them tracks are blocked. You know, after you're sitting there 20, 25 minutes, the train's still not moving, 15 minutes, you're gonna go, I'm not gonna wait on this, I don't have long. So, that's where that street is needed. If we could fix that issue, then they would probably decide to close Hoyle Street, and there wouldn't be that question. But it's just the fact that, like I said, that the lock each of the trains, and if ODOT could figure out in magic's configuration to work that out. As far as liability, I know a few years ago, there was someone who passed away on the Center Street tracks. I have to question, was anybody, did anybody sue the city for that because of a person making a choice? I know that there's been, you mentioned the mayor, there's been quite a few instances where there's been things that have happened on those tracks at Hoyle before. Is there any records of any lawsuits or anything to the city from any of those past? Because I kinda feel like that they're using this whole you could be sued as a scare tactic, is the way I feel like. You know, let's make it put everybody on edge that we're up to be for liability of being sued, when it comes down to the person's choice to go across that track, turn the things down. And they could put another guardrail on that side, so...
Anything else on this back? Mr. Shalhoub?
Are we still in the public hearing? When we come out of the public hearing, I would ask other council members to join me in suspending the rules, the three reading rules, and then after a motion to adopt, join me in voting no against this and letting city planning and ODOT work other options and bring that back to council.
Any other comments from anyone else then?
Anthony Craig, 365 Silver Street, and I agree with Ms. Rich, I live in the area, and it's a mess, husband works at Royal Pool, so, we know the area. I agree with Mr. Shalhoub, because my thought is, it might just come imminent domain us if we don't give them or try to work out a solution with us, they might just take the land from us and tell us, okay, we tried to do it the right way, and now we're just gonna snag it from you. So, I would think that maybe we should try to compromise with them instead of just saying we're gonna do what we wanna do.
Thank you. Mr. Ratliff, I saw your hand.
Oh, I was just gonna ask fellow council members what they think of that idea?
Of Mr. Shalhoub's idea?
Yeah, because if, if we, technically, it has to go back to city planning, even if we were to adopt it, or if we voted down, we would have to do it by a super majority, correct? Or it would, it would actually pass anyway, and that's what happened the last time that we, I think we actually passed something like 5 to, 5 to 4, 5 to 3, and then it wasn't adopted. And if we're not happy with what's here, that's probably the best avenue forward, and to move it along, I don't, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea to send it back.
I mean, I do think that on that phone call, they made it somewhat clear that they would just take the property if we couldn't find a solution, so...
Are they doing the work on the other side of the tracks?
They didn't say...
Mr. Shalhoub, is that the plan, they're supposed to do the work on the other side of the tracks to clean up that intersection, and that'll probably be revoked?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that.
I guess, my thought process is to let this go to a second reading, let them see if they come with some options. They're well aware of where council stands on this, and that we're opposed to it, that the citizens on that side of town are opposed to it. Let's give them an opportunity to try to come with some options, as Mr. Waronnis said.
Mr. Ratliff? Are we still in the discussion?
Yes, but I think that the mindset is, if they were to come and give us options, we can't... we can't do anything with them anyway. Because city planning, we can either vote it up or down, correct? Yes. So, so we, like.
You would have to amend.
You'd amend.
I mean, I think it, I think it almost has to. Like, I think once it comes, I don't think we have, I don't think we have some of the options we do if it comes out of committee like it does when it comes out of city planning. And so I, you know, I think it's great if they come in and they give options. I think that those options should be presented to the city planning, which then would come to us. Instead of to us, and then we would have to either vote it up or down then, and then city planning would have to take it up. It kind of takes a step out by just sending it back to them now.
So you're okay with suspending the three readings?
Well, it's the only way, because this is going to be a long process. It's not like it just, you need another consideration. This is going to be a long process and then come back for three more readings then.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
I was just thinking, because in essence, they would be amending their application at that point because in theory, because it would change so much. It's unlike the text or some of these other things, when you amend it for a year or two, now it's the whole design potentially. So that really is an amending there.
Anything else on the issue? Mr. Smith?
I'm kind of confused because I heard one of our council members earlier say that suspension of the rule should be done in emergencies only. And now I hear that we need to suspend this rule because of convenience, I guess, for I just don't see an emergency in this situation. It's not going to happen for two or three years yet. And so two weeks is not going to make that much of a difference if we wait and hear it in two weeks.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yeah, I would just back up what I said earlier. I do think that this has extraordinary circumstances around it because it has to start back from square one. We're not, for better term, cheating the public out of any, of any readings because when it would come back to us, it should get three readings at that point. So technically, it's getting four readings with the one tonight instead of the normal three.
Okay. Mr. Schaubert?
So if, I guess the comment was, I believe the comment was made that council does not want this to be closed. What's wrong with suspending the rules and going on the record tonight and saying that closing it is not an option?
I don't think it is.
We're still in the public hearing.
Okay.
It come out of, it come out of the streets and suburbs with a 3O recommendation to reject.
Okay, so then, so then let's send the clear message to ODOT and the consultants that you have to come up with other recommendations or options other than closing it. And then that's the only option that they want to do? Let them eminent domain it. Let them do it. That way, I've fulfilled my obligation as a third ward council representative and fought for the people of the third ward and everyone else that uses that street. And if we don't vote on it tonight, you're not doing that.
Ms. Rodan?
I, you know, I'm not really for or against either way, but I will tell you, I know from previous experience, if this is done with a safety concern and we start rejecting things done by the state, they might be less likely to give us safety grants in the future. So just throwing that out there. I'm not saying that's going to happen. It's just a concern.
Thank you. Anything else from the public on this issue or from council on this issue before we make any decisions? All right. Hearing none. End that public hearing at 8:03.
So we are out of the public hearing now?
Yes.
I will make the motion that we waive the three readings rule.
We have a motion to waive the three readings rule from Mr. Schaubert and Mr. Rollins.
Second.
The second. Okay, when you're ready.
Mr. Barr?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
No.
Mr. H. Smith?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
No.
Five, four.
It all requires.
Seven.
That's 55, this is 44.
I haven't changed it yet, that's 44.
Okay. So it does not carry, requires seven. So motion to suspend does not carry. Mr. Schaubert?
So the message I got from that vote is that this council truly does not want to close or leave that Hoyle Street open in time. It will be closed. They just bought themselves time.
I agree. It will be closed. But I also would like to not risk safety grant money from the state and give them an opportunity to come and speak. So I agree, I don't want it closed either. But also, Phil, we should just let it go through the readings and then we'll make those decisions, send it back to city planning and come with a better plan. Just to clarify.
Mr. Ratliff?
While we're clarifying, I just want to go on record to say, I don't think any of you four that voted no held up legislation. I think this is the legislative process and this is how it's supposed to work.
Thank you.
All right, so we take this as a second reading?
First.
So this is the first?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on.
I was confused, trying to figure out if we were sending it back to the planning commissioner.
Ordinance 2025-048.
Ordinance to establish a Safe Streets for All grant through the Department of Transportation and authorize the service director to apply and administer a grant and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Lang?
This came out of Finance Committee with the 3O recommendation. And Ms. Brown is here, so I'm going to let her explain what this grant is for.
So this grant is through the Department of Transportation. We're looking to replace all of the streetlights, the streetlights, and then tie the traffic signals. And I have those. There is a 20% match that we can use salaries, things like that. So we're, we're still working, this one's not due till June, late June. So we haven't completely gotten it figured out yet. Once we get the cost estimate from the engineers, we're going to sit down and we're going to make it so we don't have to pay for the 20%. We'll make it split salaries. And it's over five years, so we have five years to go.
Ms. Ginn?
So the intersections have been identified?
Yes, I have those. So it's Church and Prospect, Church and Main, Church and State, Center and Main, and Center and Forest Lawn Boulevard. I don't know, I believe my son's right, I don't know off the top of my head, two, maybe a couple intersections that have already been done. But I just wanted to match up the four neighbors for better traffic.
State and Center, Prospect and Center.
You said the application is not due until June?
Yeah, I believe it's the 26th.
Okay, is there any advantage to passing it early or no?
I would be able to submit it earlier. It's not one that closes when it gets a certain amount, so I don't necessarily believe so.
Mr. Neff?
You said Church and Main, is that correct? My brain is focused, not.
Yes, for sure. I can send them to you if you'd like.
Okay. That one's really great because that's where the archway is going to go. And I know on the renderings, which were wonderful, that we had the renderings overlaid over this. I don't even know how to describe this old traffic signal. I guess it'd be the best way to describe it. So thank you.
Would you send that to all of council?
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Mr. Barr?
I'm going to make a motion to suspend the three readings.
You have a motion to suspend from Mr. Barr and a second from Mr. Neff? Ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. H. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously to suspend the three reading rule. Uh, Mr. Barr?
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt?
Second.
And a second from Mr. Prater. Any more discussion on that issue?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. H. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance 2025-048. Fourteenth, ordinance 2025-049, Victims Assistant.
Ordinance making an appropriation mandated by ORC 5705.44, previously approved by council in ordinance 2024-135 in the below-listed line item for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
Ms. Lang?
This came out of Finance Committee with a 2-1 and no recommendation. This is, I believe, to deappropriate funds for the Victims Assistance Program. Ms. Courtwright, if you would like to add anything?
No, this is just, we were passed it last fall, but additional grants came in to support Victims Assistance Fund, so we're asking to deappropriate those funds. I would ask this as a rule so that those funds could be removed from the budget and just not available to be appropriated for anything, any other purchases.
Mr. Barr?
I just had a question. It come out with a 2-1 recommendation. Mr. Rollins, I believe it was your vote, was there a reason for that?
Yeah, if you go back, I didn't support removing this from the budget to begin with.
Right, you wanted it just to stay where it was at with the.
Absolutely, 100%. Yep.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Although with the financial situation, I think we want that money back.
I think if you're a victim of a crime in Marion, you probably don't, but, yeah, okay.
They have, I mean, they still have the same amount of funds now. They just, here is more grant money.
I stand with what I said.
You have a comment? Just clar, I was just clarifying about whether it was regulated or not. No recommendation, Ms. Lang, correct? That's correct, okay. Question or comment around here?
I'd like to hear more from Ms. Rollins.
Well.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to hear.
You'll need to come up to the podium if you have a comment?
Name an address.
And then name an address, please.
Yes, Kelly Haynes wants to be shot at the court. I am very interested in this as a victim. And I would like to hear more of why he's going against everyone else and explain it to us, why you're voting like this. I just want to.
Yeah, I think of all the things that we could cut from the budget, assisting victims of crime in Marion is probably not one of them. I think it's one of the very few obligations we have as city council members to take care of those in need and those in distress in our community. I didn't support this being removed from the budget. If you go back, those original votes, I voted no. I stand with that.
I agree with them. I mean, 100%. I'm a victim. I haven't been able to get any type of assistance. I've got two five-year protection orders that were in place at the time that Marion City Police Officers attached the man who actually victimized me, attached him to me in an AKA, then turned around and indicted this man for felonious assault with his my social security number. I have not been able to work. I could not get licensed as an insurance agent, lost my mother's house, which is in that area right there, the, you know, that zoning area. Lost it because I couldn't work. I'm a victim. Now, mind you, and the police officers did this, and I am just now getting it corrected, right? Destroyed my life, my children's lives. I agree with them. We need this money and we need to start giving it out to the people who need it because I ain't got none of it. I haven't got not a penny. I'm, I'm hurt. My children are hurt. There are many people who are hurt. And if you can explain to us what this money is for and why you don't want to give it to us, yeah, I, I hear your side of it too.
It's not that we're not wanting to give it. The funds that were allocated for the project are for staffing that is paid for by the county and that's split funded and they have a certain amount of money they needed for those staff people that they are hired already with the grant funds that they have.
Because they got more grant funds.
They were going to get the grant funds, that's why they asked for additional funds from the city. But they got their grant funds. This is paid for staff. There's two, a full-time and a part-time administrative assistant that we pay for that supports that for the city.
We might need more people on staff.
Well.
We might need more staff. I, I never get calls back. I call and call and I've even gotten where my emails, I have been emailing city officials, right? And they blocked me. I can't even email them. Is that even allowed? I don't know if people are allowed to do that because they block me because they get tired of me day after day after day, telling them it's what you did wrong. This is what you did, this is in a public records request given to me, I got proof. They don't want to hear it though. They don't want to hear it. They ain't got time to get back to anybody. So maybe they need to hire some more people, like me. I need a job. I've been victimized, can't get work. Yeah, we need, we need that money. You're right.
Mr. Barr? Thank you.
I just want to say, I, I agree with Mr. Rollins completely. This was amended to lower the amount in the beginning. I was the one that made the motion to amend it back to the full amount. And I'll be the first one to, to motion or to approve more funding to have they, they need and if they have a need for that. And I think most of us on here will. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings.
We have more public comment to thank and we'll come back to Mr. Barr.
But she didn't take public comment on the last ordinance that she suspended the rules and passed, but that's okay. Naomi Craig, 365 Silver Street. Mr. Rollins, I agree with you 100%. I know the ladies that work in Victims Assistance. We just heard there's a full-time and a part-time. And I was told they dealt with over 1,300 victims last year on 60 hours a week. And they worked much more than their 85. So I'd like them some money. I know we're not going to, but thank you for standing up for victims of crime in this town.
As I said before, I was the one that made the motion to give them the full amount after there was amendment to cut it. I have no problems with that. That's not what it's what it's about. They can come back and ask for money if they need money.
Naomi Craig, 365 Silver Street. I didn't say any of those things to you, but apparently that's what you assumed, but that's not what I said.
I'm sorry, Ms. Craig, I must have misunderstood you.
Clearly you did because I was speaking to Mr. Rollins.
I believe I made a motion.
Would you repeat that motion, Mr. Barr?
I'm making a motion to suspend the three readings.
Thank you. And Mr. T. Smith, I see your hand first.
Yes, ma'am.
Second it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. H. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Seven, two.
Past seven, two.
Mr. Ratliff.
Well, I'm going to stick with this.
Motion to adopt.
Before we go on, I have one of these. Thank you. We have a motion for Mr. Barr to adopt and a second for Mr. H. Smith?
Just a quick point of order, we did have a vote in the minority party in the negative.
Well, yes. Was there more discussion that needs to happen?
You have a, I didn't hear you, did you decide on whether or not you were going Did you decide on whether or not you were going to accept that?
Oh.
Or not?
I was, I'm not accepting that. I, I felt like we had enough discussion on this.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Yep.
Madam President, if I could have you just think about that for a minute. And the reason here is that, one, by sitting on this for two more weeks, we're not, we're not jeopardizing anything. They have the entire amount of money, and this is to deappropriate money. So we're not, there is nothing held up, there's nothing, anything with, with this. But, um, in my initial, uh, looking at it, is that what we were told when we were, when they were asked for the initial amount of money to start with, is that if they got the same grant money that they did last year, uh, that they would have the same, um, request as last year. And from what I have found, and again, I've not confirmed any of this, I've got some, I've got some calls out, is that the grant money that was received is the same grant money as last year, but yet the funding, once that this is deappropriated, would be more than they received last year. And if, you know, if, if we were told that they only need X amount of dollars if they receive the grant money, and they received the grant money, and now we're giving X plus $5,000, I just think that we should have an explanation. We should have a budget from them, and we should know where that that money's going.
Ms. Courtright, can you comment on that as far as how to?
Yeah, a little bit. I think both budgets were all submitted back when we originally did this back in the fall. So, a budget was submitted, they knew how much money they needed. They thought they would get so much money, uh, from, they thought their grant was going to be cut. They'd been told to expect a 20%, 30% cut. So they asked for more money than what they normally would have from us and the county, and they split that. We approved ours, that we would pay. We found out that they got the grant and got fully funded through that grant of what they asked for, so they didn't need the additional dollars that we approved. So all we're simply doing is a, a bookkeeping of putting this back in to the general fund to be used somewhere else, not, not by, they didn't need the money.
And we have a couple of members of council who would disagree with that. So, Ms. Ratliff, I don't, I don't see how?
I believe that they received $17,000 last year from the city. And if, if this, if my math is right, they would receive $22,000 this year. So my question is, if we were, if we were told if they get fully funded, they would need the same amount as last year. And if they got fully funded, my question is, because we did receive a budget, why do they need more than last year?
Cost of living adjustments, there were raises on, on the salaries, and we're not talking about, so those were adjusted. The salaries I got received in the fall is what they're based the budget on, based on what they believe their salaries and benefits would be for the full-time and the part-time person. I didn't bring that down with me. I mean, if you guys want to wait, this is not, this, you can wait two weeks. I can bring, I can pull back.
And that, and that's why I was saying, if we could, if we could look into this, there is nothing held up, because right now they have the entire amount of money.
And every purchaser comes from me, so I'm obviously not going to approve any money moves to, to go from that line. So it's, it's, it's fine where it sits. I can bring, I can pull out what they submitted last fall and, you know, produce something for you guys.
And, you know, and I know in the scheme of things, it's a small amount of money, but this would be a, you know, 20, math in my head, like a 22% increase. And that's, that's large.
Well, I, I don't, like I said, it was November when I prepared that originally, so I will pull it out, look at it, and we'll, yeah, help insurance and salaries and benefits. I, I, I'd have to go back and look, uh, but I can prepare something for you for next, for two weeks.
Well, in light of that, in light of that, I will reverse the decision and go with the minority.
Thank you.
On behalf of more information, thank you. All right. That brings us to matters not on the agenda. Mr. Schaubert?
Wednesday was brought to my attention that there's a patch of field between the end of Brentwood and Rosewood and that elementary school. And I cannot think of what that elementary school name is. It used to be old Glenwood. Is it McCandlin? It's not McCandlin. Garfield. Yes, Garfield. So, that's city schools property. And Wednesday, there was a sprayer in there to kill all the grass. And from what I gather from the gentleman spraying the grass is that pheasants forever may be leasing this piece of ground to change that to pheasant habitat. Which, okay, but how does that fall within our six-inch-tall weeds and grass zoning issue? And I will add that the neighbors on that end of Brentwood and Rosewood are not real thrilled about having the tall grass growing, if indeed, in fact, that's what's happening. I haven't been able to get any answers. I went to regional planning, they were unaware. I've got two calls out to school board members, and I've not received any call back.
So it's a school property, or?
Yes, yes. So, but, what I question is, so Lynn Clayball owns farm ground that is farmed within the city, and each year, or every five years or so often, we have to pass a resolution saying that he can, in fact, do agricultural practices within city limits. I'm thinking that this may fall under that same, same thing. So no one from the city has heard anything? Okay.
Madam President, I have a, uh, urgent ordinance that I would like to add to the agenda tonight. As he's passing that out, this is just something that came to light within the last four or five days. Before the end of last week, we found out that, and I'll let Ms. Courtright and Mr. Cal to bring it more in depth, but it basically deals with the money that we use to purchase the riot aid facility for our fire station. There's an option that the state allows us to get reimbursed, get reimbursed that money. If we, if we bond out money for the construction project, we can add the cost of the building into that, um, to bond that out and, and forego the using of our cash funds that we did for that building. But there's a very short timeframe that you're allowed to do that in, and they were just made aware of it late last week. So that's what, that's what we're trying to do today, is just pass an ordinance that allows us to take advantage of that if we choose to when it comes to that. But it has to be done rather quickly. But add anything to it?
Ms. Courtright, just a small clarification. So after we purchased the riot aid building, we met with legal counsel, and they saw that we already purchased the building. We had some conversations on, um, kind of next steps, um, how to proceed with the, the new fire station that we're in the process of renovating. There's, there's no urgent need for this, other than the fact that we have 60 days to pass this resolution, um, to use it over the next 18 months. We don't know exactly the cost of the renovation. We have an estimate of what we believe. We started this process back in 2018. So we don't anticipate having to do that. We've already used the cash, we've already done that. However, up, up to 18 months, we can reimburse ourselves from the bond back to the city and to the fire fund in case we need it. We don't anticipate doing that, but because we only have a 60-day window, and we don't have a committee meeting on the 5th, that's why we're bringing this to, as the night and not on the agenda. 60 days from the purchase of the property, which would be May 23rd. The 25th is when it falls, but probably is the last, this, last business day. And then next, um, council meeting would be, after committee, would be on the 27th.
If I might, I need a little bit of clarification. You, you've both mentioned an ordinance, and this says resolution.
It is a resolution.
Okay, all right. That, that, that will determine the number I use.
That is a resolution.
You mentioned May 5th.
Agenda.
We will not have finance that night.
Finance committee is first.
Okay. That's for clarification, thank you.
Okay, just some, some questions. You had said after we, we purchased the building, you met with legal counsel.
After we bought the building.
Who?
Brookler, Eckler, or Brookler and Grayson. That's their old name. Brookler and Grayson is our legal counsel that we've been working on to do the procurement and securing our, our construction management group. So they're working on that, and they mentioned that as we're working on this, that it might be wise for us to pass this ordinance in case we get into the process and it costs a little bit more, and we need to use some of the, we have, we budgeted a certain amount, but we need to go back, we can reimburse ourselves a little bit out of the purchase price where we did. But we only have 60 days after we purchased the property to pass this resolution. Then we have up to 18 months to reimburse ourselves if we need to.
Now, you've said to reimburse ourselves, and I think the mayor alluded to that, too. Explain to me how we get reimbursed.
Through the bond. So when we issued the bond, because later in the year, we're going to have to issue a bond to do the renovations, because we're not going to have the kind of monies. The bond payment would come out of the levy fund, which is what they initially planned to do when they passed this, um, passed the levy, the fire, for the new fire station.
Okay, so I?
Initially, we would have a bond payment that would come out of the levy.
Correct. So I still, I still, I don't understand that we get reimbursed.
Means we would get money out of the bond. So when we issued bond, part of that money would be said-side back to the reimbursement of that property, and then the rest of it would be used to make the payments to, um, the com, the management company that is doing the renovations, electric companies and whoever else is doing the renovations. They call a reimbursement. It's not really the best firm, um, way to do it, again, it's just the accounting portion of it.
Okay. Now, it's my understanding that the fire house was purchased from the money from the fire levy.
It is, it was.
So?
But that's also the same fund that would be making the bond payments.
Okay.
So we would have that bond that we issue if we decide, and we wouldn't obviously do it this year, if we get into next year, as we're in the process of knowing what the cost is going to be. The budget is set, once the management company is determined all the procurement processes have been followed, if it seems that we may need more than what we originally budgeted back into, from 2018, we would then use some of that bond money to pay back the levy fund that would free up another, potentially, a million dollars that we spent.
Okay. Now, tell me why I'm looking at this wrong? Because if we bond out $9 million?
That's more than, a million more than what we anticipated the budget to be back when we started the process.
At 5% interest, we'd be paying $450,000 a year in interest on money that we may or may not need.
Well, we're not, but, we're not going to use it, we're not issuing bonds until later in the year. By the time we determine that, we have to do something now, otherwise we won't be able to go back into this window. We don't have to use it. If we determine we can make it without doing that, obviously, we're not going to, we're not going to borrow against the money we already spent and spend more money we don't need to.
So you, being a budget director, what do you forecast? Do we need it?
I don't know, because I don't know how much it's going to cost to build, to renovate that building until we get into that part of the process. I don't anticipate it, but I don't want to be in the position after 60 days and say, "Oh, I should have done that." It was, it's just safety net. I don't anticipate we need it, but we only have a small window to do it. And based on conversations we've had with Brookler and their finance people, which I have high expect, I have high threshold on, because they have worked with me on other projects and other places I've worked. And they said this is probably a good safety net to do just these. We probably won't need it.
And we're not able to bond it out if we get into the project and realize that we didn't budget it correctly?
Yeah, we, this, we only have 60 days.
So like, we have no option to borrow money at that point?
Well, we can borrow money, but we have already, have, it's, if we want, if we need more than what we anticipate, we're, we're just going to be without that.
Mr. Rollins, did you have a question?
Yeah, do we need to waive committee consideration? I would like to make a motion to do that, so we can continue to discuss.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to waive consideration, consideration? Committee consideration, and a second for Mr. Rollins, and a second for Mr. Arsna. You ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Arsna?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Neff?
So just to, to clarify for myself, if we were to add this to the agenda, we could have a first reading tonight, and, you know, we can discuss and deliberate, come back on the May 12th, which would be our next full council meeting, I believe.
Correct.
Would we, would we have to do it then, or would we have to?
We would have to do it then, because we wouldn't. Actually, we wanted to bring it as soon as possible, that way there is a potential there, you know, second.
Certainly, because we're in the finance committee. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, just a quick, another point of order. This technically should be the first reading, so can we have the reading?
I was just, yeah. For the record, this will be Resolution 2025-021. Resolution authorizing the use of a portion of the proceeds of bonds or bond anticipation notes of a city and the estimated principal amount of not to exceed $9 million to be issued for the purpose of constructing, acquiring, furnishing, and equipping a fire station, improving the site thereof, and purchasing and acquiring equipment and apparatuses related there to, and authorizing and approving related matters, and declaring an emergency.
Now, just a small point of order. I believe, and I don't mean to be rough on Jeff tonight, but I believe that the mayor can add something to the agenda.
He did.
But I don't believe he can add something after the agenda is done that's not on the agenda, that I do believe it takes a first, second, and a third from council, um, to do that.
I thought he was able to do it under matters not on the agenda.
I don't, but?
If he did, I would have no recommendation on that. I, that is not something that comes up very often, so.
But was sent, uh?
It was sent to the law director for review prior.
I just think, air on the side of caution, I will be the first. I'm just, I, I think, I do think we have to do that.
Second.
I'll be the third.
You feel better?
I'm just, I'm nervous.
Do I have to read it again?
Sure.
If you want.
We'd like to hear you read.
Okay.
Ms. Craig has a question.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Craig?
Naomi Craig, 365 Silver Street, are we even able to get bonds with no bond rating? I think that would be a question.
Yes.
We are able, so are we going to get horrible interest rates?
Not terribly, actually.
Not, but not great either.
Oh, I mean, we're talking like half, half a point. I mean, it's, it's well within reasonable.
And then we can always refund these bonds, and if rates get better, and then the, our bond rating improves. This would be the next, uh, that's what we, uh, definitely. So I, I want, I want to understand, the levy money that we have we use to purchase the building?
Mm-hmm.
And the bonds that we're talking about taking out, putting out, however we're going to put it, would be to repairs, upgrades, stuff, to make it into a fire station?
Correct. Yep. Are we all the renovations that would be required, um, part of building bays?
Um, so, all of those will be completed, like, one base thing? I mean, we're going to go with one contractor, I get that, and all of that, sort of stuff?
Correct. There'll be a lead contractor, and then all of those are some rated, we'll work under them.
And then we'll, like, pay them quarterly or something like that?
We will pay them based on work completion and, and you add?
Like, construction ones, basically?
Yep, yep.
Okay.[1761.11] Okay. Because I was just kind of, I understand the 60-day thing, but man, $9 million makes me nervous, especially when we're talking about a million over what we're thinking
we're going to be, well, we don't know how to be, but we anticipated eight, that's what we thought, and with the bonds, we would be making the payments over the next 25 years. I know, it's like filing a house, I mean, it's-
Well, we passed a levy for this, though, I mean, it's-
There's money sitting there, the money, you know, we get the two payments a year, and the money in there was directly, to pay the bonds, and to the ambulances and equipment. So, we obviously didn't, we started collecting '24, we got our payment in '24, both payments in '24, a payment in '25, that's-
We'll get cash this year.
We'll get another one in August.
Okay.
So, that one we anticipate, you know, we-
How much are those things? Does it vary?
It varies, first one's usually larger than the second one, but overall, it's usually about $1.2 million in the 24th of May.
And that's first half, you would pay all the property taxes at the beginning of the year, and it's so much.
And, and also, the first half also has delinquencies from silver and all that others don't feel. The other half is usually a little bit bigger, just depending on what we get.
Okay. I just guess, I know all of us kind of went back there when we heard $9 million with the spending issues, but we seem to have-
Well, that's really why I wanted to remove that extra $27,000, because I'm, I'm trying very hard to pull that general fund budget back in line. I mean, I can tell you that I think my budget was 2.3 over, and based on collections right now, I'm anticipating it to be closer to 1.9. Last year, we underspent the general fund budget by a million dollars. So if that's the case again this year, then we may be only over by 900,000. That's definitely within reach to get, you know, get cleaned up and continue moving in the right direction. We have to get our books in order.
If we underspent by a million dollars last year, you said million?
Just general fund.
Then why do we need to cash the bonds?
Because we keep, we don't keep all that cash in our regular checking account.
Right, right.
It's in multiple accounts.
But we spent some of it on past two buildings, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, but that's not, that's not part of this conversation, so I'm, I'm trying, I mean, that's not me, that I can't, so I can't answer some of, I'm trying to stay in my lane. But my, I could tell you that we pulled money ahead by $2 million, when we were going to have to buy the building for a little over a million, and-
When did we pull the $2 million, just that criteria?
In March.
Okay.
Beginning of March.
We were about to have another meeting last week, where we were going to cash-
Yeah, but I'm working on the cash flow step foot, Chelsea's all not, we're not quite ready. We are in dire straits, but we do want to do something with that money that's sitting out there, because it's not, it's making money in the money market, but it's not making anything in long-term minus right now.
But then we were also told by Mr. McGinnis that we might need to move on money to pay bills.
But that's what we're not sure until we finish the cash flow.
That's scary.
Which is where myself, we keep saying, "I'm sure," because I wanted to fill the cash flow, because I wasn't here much, I, I mean, last year was first year here, so I, I've jumped in, and, but again, I'm trying to work on the budget side.
Mr. Collins said that you had needed to cash flow, or-
And I'm in the process of it, and we separated out the cash flow, general fund versus enterprise.
Okay, so that did finally, did figure it out?
It's, it's not quite finished, but I'm, I'm sure that's mine, 9% of that money worked all last week, so, you know, I have that, and I've shared it with, with McGinnis, I call him, yes, so we can see, so-
So that would be something that the public-
Yeah, once, once we get, yeah, once it's, it's not finished, it's still draft form, so once it's done, and I've checked my numbers, and I make sure I give the public the information, yes, it will be coming out to the council, as they can do as well. Yeah, it's just, it's just concerning hearing that they're paying out $9 million worth of debt. And it was, and it probably will be in two pieces, will they carve it out, based on, you know, because we anticipate rates will be better as well, so we're, so it won't all be at once, and we're working through the process. Good, thank you.
Madam President, one thing that I want to make sure that is clarified is, the money that's borrowed for the fire station will be paid back with levy funding. So all the money that goes into that levy funding has to be spread on the fire station or fire trucks, and they will make sure that there's enough money in there each and every year to pay whatever their payment is for the bonds that they take out, so.
Okay. Thank you. So Mr. Ratliff first, and then Mr. Schaubert.
Okay, question, I guess I'll ask Chief Dean first.
No.
Because I was, I was here with all the discussions when we put the fire on the ballot. Now, can money be used for salaries?
Can it? Yes.
Okay, so, here, here's my theory. I believe that the city's financial position is worse than what we say. And when we say we're gonna, we're going to be able to bond $9 million, which is a million dollars more than we believe the project is going to cost, we would have a potential in the next year to two years to use the money not to pay cash to buy the building, but now to bond that, pay ourselves back the 1. whatever million dollars we just bought the building with, use that money to pay salaries, and now we are in, we, now we owe $9 million. Is what could happen. So my, so my question is, if we think that it could cost a million more than we budgeted, we budgeted eight, we think it could be nine, why isn't the bond for a million? Why is it for the entire nine?
So it's not. What we're talking about right now is the ability to recoup that 1.2 million that we laid out for the building. The bonds for the rest of the construction project will come later this year. This is just about that 1.2 million dollars right now.
But my question is, why do we need to reimburse ourselves the 1.2?
It's, so, this is giving you the option of doing it over the next 18 months, should you need the money. I don't know if you guys remember, you approved the purchase of two ambulances, they're due to come in the third quarter of this year. I'm going to need, I believe we budgeted $644,000 out of this month. When we budgeted that, I don't know if you guys remember, it had a five-year projection, at that time, we didn't have to put out the 1.2 million, that was based on using the land in front of the hospital. You guys remember this? So obviously, things changed, we had to use the cash that we had on hand to purchase this property. When those ambulances come in, like I said, it's supposed to be third quarter, we'll see if they show up or not. If they do, we may need some of this cash on hand to take from those ambulances. It may not be all of it, it may just be a small portion of it. We don't know for sure, because we get that payment in August, we don't know the exact number that that, that's going to be, does it make sense?
Okay, so you, well, here's, here's what's frustrating.
Okay.
Is that I asked the budget director earlier, does she anticipate us needing it? And she said no.
Well, I didn't really, I didn't realize-
We may not have had that conversation, that, that might be on me, that I maybe need to make sure that she was aware of that.
Okay, you know, but then you, you do anticipate us needing it.
Potentially, like I said, I, I don't know for sure, it depends on how much money comes in in August.
And so my, my question still, if we need the 1.2, why are we going to authorize bonds for nine?
That's, that's not what we're talking about tonight.
It is.
My understanding was that, was that this was, what we're talking about tonight was just the 1.2.
This is for the project, no, this is, the expenditure's for the project, this is the entire thing.
But, again-
But the reimbursement would only be one percent.
Right, the reimbursement that we're talking about tonight is just the 1.2. Yes, yes, this does include the, the full $9 million, which, when we proposed building a fire station on the site in front of the hospital, that the budget then was $9 million for that project, without having to purchase labor. And that's based on $450 per square foot for a fire station, which is the going average.
Now, I thought we heard tonight the budget was eight million.
What's that?
I thought we heard tonight the budget was eight.
I believe it was reduced, the overall, or the construction budget was reduced because we had to use a million dollars to purchase the property.
And because the building is built, so it would be potentially less outlay of cost to renovate versus building from ground zero.
Does that make sense?
I mean, yes, but I, I still say that there is a potential to do exactly what the mayor said can't be done, because what he said is the money will be used, or has to be used, I believe was the wording.
Right, when we passed, when we passed that level, we had to use that boilerplate language-
Correct.
-that came from the state, that includes the potential producing salaries. If you remember, when we did that, I asked you guys for an ordinance or a resolution restricting how that money could be spent.
Now, would you-
And that didn't happen.
Would you ask us for that still today?
Absolutely.
We can't do that, we can't do that.
I'm not going to embarrass you.
I think you can, I think you can pass it, pass it as a, an ordinance saying that it can, that it can be used for the, the capital projects that we talked about, and you could include an urgency clause in there, that if, God forbid, we get in a position where we're facing layoffs, that through council and the mayor's office, you guys could approve a change to that to allow it to be used for salaries, but you guys would have to approve it. I think it would be wise.
So, again, if I can address Chief Dean. So you touched a little bit on your list that you had your five-year projection, I think it even went out well beyond that.
I had a 30-year projection, and then I had a more kind of, well, a five-year plan that was more definite.
Right, so, and it sounds like you haven't had a conversation or an in-depth conver-
I did have that, I did have that.
Okay, so how does borrowing money play into all the other payments we have built into your schedule? Because you, if you borrow, if you borrow money, you have a payment. How drastically, or will it even affect your five-year immediate projection?
So, well, this is talking about a total, grand total of $9 million-
Right.
-or a total over the entire project, which is what we projected initially for the, the cost to build the building in front of the hospital.
Right.
That payment was a little over $547,000 a year.
Okay.
The balance of the money collected from the property tax was just close to about the same amount, really, it's around $550,000 a year. We had planned on using that for apparatus and ambulances, and that's all within, within that one.
So your original plan had a payment for construction costs, whether it was at a new build or refurb?
Yep.
And it's still projected out fine where you can buy these at, but right now, it sounds like we're in a cash flow position because of a purchase instead of using free pro, free ground.
Yes.
Because if we use the hospital ground, that would open up, I think that would open up that lease, we could have got that for free.
So, that doesn't really, that's not accurate, so, when we, when we decided to purchase the Rite Aid property, we had a consultant do a study saying, if we built this building as it stands today, new, instead of refurbishing what we had, what kind of cost savings are we going to realize, being that the sewer's already done, the utilities, the parking lot, the building, and all we're doing is refurbishing and adding on bay?
Mm-hmm.
And the savings was close to $2 million.
Yeah.
1.9 something million dollars. So it's not about whether we purchased ground or land, or didn't have to purchase land, we still had to build the building.
Yeah, and that wasn't my point.
And the building back then, so I, I think the $9 million is worst-case scenario of what the cost might have been from four or five years ago, when they initially got the estimate, to what today's costs are, and we're very early in the process, and we have, we have no idea. Basically, what I've told them is, you have whatever amount you have left in that levy fund, after you pay for trucks and your, your payments every year, or whatever that is, whatever you have left is how much we can borrow. So, we're not going to borrow more than what they can pay out of that levy.
Okay, your last statement is what I was getting at with Chief Dean.
That's what I was trying, it's, it's a long way to get around at that point.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Something on this issue? Ms. Craig?
Hey, Craig 365 Silver Street, my concern is, is that I've heard multiple times that the city is not in good financial shape, and that we might be laying off city employees. Now, I don't know how that would roll downhill, or who it would hit, I would certainly hope that it wouldn't be firefighters, but it would concern me that we'd be borrowing money to pay salaries, and that we would technically be paying interest to keep people employed if we do this through the bond, and we use that money for salaries.
We have no intent to use that money.
It's a levy money, it's the, it's not the bond, it's what we're originally, when they passed the levy, they're saying that they couldn't use that money for salaries.
Okay.
Because that was the boilerplate wording that the state required.
So I guess maybe, one of my thoughts is, is that I see the big piece of legislation laying in front of you, maybe we shouldn't pass these things out at 8:30 at night, when people have a dozen questions, because, I mean, no one in the public has seen it, but you guys are going to suspend the rules and pass it as an emergency? Now I see some head shaking, thank you.
We said, we said, I purpose looked at tonight, because I knew they would have another-
Okay, I missed that part, because there's been the back and forth between the bonds and the levies and everything else, and it's-
I wondered, did I have any, I wanted to please have as much time as we could, I just knew that we didn't have the committee meeting up at this, that's why I brought it, as the mayor's put this on, that it's not on the agenda, we do not need to pass this until the 12th of May.
Will we have a better idea how much we're going to cost, or are we just going to like annex gold and, or flash?
Not by the 12th of May, unfortunately.
Okay, so we're just asking-
But we're not going to borrow and use it until, unless it came to that, and obviously, we would bring something back to council, so they would know that.
So you're asking for authorization to borrow up to $9 million, but if we need to borrow any money, we're going to ask council to do it?
If we have to use that money, we would bring something back so they know that. So at least someone isn't aware of that situation.
Thank you.
Communication.
Problem.
I, I just have a question.
Go, this one.
So I have to be ready for this, I have a more on this, is the main point of the resolution to make sure that the purchase is also an eligible, reimbursable debt versus being just the construction? So you got the purchase costs here, and so that just gives it, that if you find yourself in that position, you can pull that and replenish your levy fund, so you have cash to go to the fire apparatus.
Thank you.
May 365 Silver Street, I think it's worth the conversation about what happened with Mr. Schaubert being conspired against, to be shut out of executive sessions, since I wasn't allowed to speak about it, or, I'm sorry, being, executive sessions being held to exclude Mr. Schaubert, since we weren't allowed to discuss it last Monday, because I got gabbled while I was being yelled at by the audience and accused by Mr. Smith, do you realize that you had a period of-
I'm going to have to gavel you again, I wasn't here Monday, but this sounds like a lot of hearsay.
It happened, everyone else in the room was here, it happened. Mr. Prater's nodding, I mean, Mr. Ratliff's nodding.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Well, no, do I have to have a question during matters not on the agenda? Since we weren't allowed to discuss it, since I was gabbled, because the audience was jailing at me and accusing me of felonies, which is defamation per se, I think that we should talk about Mr. Schaubert. Well, basically, the finance chair and the mayor keeping him out of, or conspiring to keep information away from him, it happened, Mrs. Stoneburn, and there's a recording of it, apparently you haven't heard it yet, but there is a recording of the mayor and Mrs. Lang having a conversation during a secret Treasury Investment Board meeting, where they're talking about keeping Mr. Schaubert out of the loop and not giving him information. And as a resident of this city, no, Mr. Schaubert doesn't represent me, but he does represent about 3,000 or 4,000 of my neighbors, and I think everyone should be ashamed. I think that being shouted down and called a bully and being accused of felonies, that's suppressing people's speech, and if you think that being threatened with litigation is bullying, it's not. I sent you all the email, State of Ohio told me to sue you, okay? They sent me the information and told me how to sue you. So if that's a threat, then you need to take that up with the auditor of the State of Ohio. But when you have an administration and a legislation that will do nothing, all that we are left with is the judicial system to help us. So that's where we will be, and Mr. Smith, you can count on giving a deposition in this hearing now. Thank you.
ORC 2921.03.
And you just publicly defamed me again.
Ms. President?
Uh, Ms. Brad.
Just to even- Just to even, I guess, make a comment on that. And I think, you know, maybe we all say things we wish we wouldn't have said, or we all say things that we shouldn't sometimes, and I'm just as guilty as anybody else, I'm sure. And I think when any of us heard that recording, that shouldn't have been said. And when any of us heard that recording, it, you know, it's bad. It is. And we should not ever exclude elected officials from meetings or executive sessions or anything like that. And, you know, and I'm coming from a position that a few years ago, there was actually a vote on this council to kick me out of the meeting. And that vote went four to five. And if one person would have voted the other way, the president at the time ordered me out of the meeting, and then there was a vote of council. And it was all over issues in the auditor's office. And at that point, councilperson landed, and there were decisions being made already where everybody, right before Christmas, had received a letter that their jobs were all terminated in the auditor's office. And I thought that was utterly ridiculous. And what I was saying, as the president ordered me out of the meeting, was that decisions are being made that will financially be devastating for the city for years to come. And that was the actual wording of the sentence I was making at the time. And, you know, I wish people would have listened, because that was true. And since I heard the recording, I have talked to the city auditor, who it's my understanding, she's the person who schedules the meetings, and have asked that the Treasury Investment Board meet on committee nights. And I think that that is important. I think that the Treasury Investment Board should have better public notice of when those meetings are going to be. I think the Treasury Investment Board should meet on city council nights. We're all here anyway. And I think it's good for council members to hear what's, to hear what's going on. Because what we learned in the last committee meeting of finance, Mr. Rollins and I both did not know that $2 million had been cashed out. And, you know, I think we should know, I think you should know, when money is being cashed out of investments and being moved to, you know, to liquid cash. And I think that this council could maybe foreshadow better and make better decisions if we knew what the true financial situation of the city is. And so, you know, just, just to address what you said, I was equally concerned of that. It shouldn't have been said. And I, and I would hope that if that vote were to ever come before this council, that that would not pass. You know, I don't care if you like the person. I don't care if you like what they say. I could care less. They are elected by the people to be here, and to exclude an elected official would be to exclude an entire section of the city's voice. And I just, you know, and it almost happened to me, and, you know, almost happened to the entire second ward for that particular meeting. And I, that's why I took the steps to call the auditor to try to make sure that something like that would never happen again.
Hammerich, 332 Knight Street. My first thing is, I understand, and I don't come here very often, and we've heard the last few weeks about people not being included in the meetings. And as a resident of the third ward, I feel like on my behalf of one of the residents in his ward, if there is an issue to where you're not being allowed into meetings or things are getting, I would expect my councilman to handle that. It would not be on me to handle that for him. So, whatever you feel you need to do on this situation, but I feel that that's up to him to do, in his position, rather than for someone to stand up here and advocate for lawsuits or whatever on his behalf. If he wants to file a lawsuit, then I think he'll file his lawsuit and he'll take care of it. On a separate question I do have on that side, is on the third ward is the building across from Barfield, the brick building that's been there for years. It's been a laundromat. It's been a little store. It's been a bar. It's been all kinds of things. Every time I drive by that, the doors are not covered on that, and I know people pull those off, but if to continually go after that person, tell them that they need to make sure that that building is secured, maybe they'll get tired and sell it and we could tear it down someday. But being that close to a school, I am concerned for children that may be walking home, that, you know, it's open all the time, and they could be injured. There's been a fire there. I haven't seen those doors boarded up for a long, long time. On top of six, eight months, they've been standing open to that. So, I ask if you would please address that, maybe get it secured. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stuck around here, Natali Haynes. 160 Charlotte's Court. Stuck around here tonight because I don't get to make it often. I am the founder of Moms and Dads Network. For those of you who don't know, Moms and Dads Network is a pro-state network for parents who just can't afford attorneys, maybe their children's have been taken by CPS. They just need to know, you know, what ordinance is to read, what code to check, and I help them along their way, teach them about templates and how to do this. Tonight, I seen, I was invited here, reminded to come tonight by Ms. Craig. She is fabulous in making sure the community is aware of what time to come and so on and so forth. So, I appreciated her giving me that heads up. I think maybe she's right in sticking up for freedom of speech and, let's see, the sunshine laws of Ohio and, you know, making sure that everyone is included in open meetings acts and all these things. I don't think she's out of line for speaking up for, Jason here, I don't think she's out of line. I think we all need to stand up for each other. This is, first of all, we, the people. These are elected officials who are here to do our bidding, what we want. I was accosted and thrown out of a building that I own. It's part of we, the people, because some official thought they could tell me, what are we, the people, to leave my building? They really thought they had the power to do that. And they don't, because what happens is, people get elected and they overstep. They get big-headed. They forget who they work for, right? And then whoever they work for, forget their positions. They forget that, you know, we have to hold you guys accountable. You work for us, right? So, that happens, right? But I think what's going on here is, I see a lot of childishness. I don't understand it, because this is supposed to be adults handling adult business, you know? And if there's a, if there's an official who's being locked out or not being, you know, listened to, get around the rules and not let them be a part of it, that needs to stop. I took Davio's course to do the public records and open meetings acts here in Marion. So, I'm the one everybody calls. What I do is I go down to the library, and I have kids who are getting punished by their parents. They send their kids over to me, and I make them read, right? This is what's going on here. I'm a stickler. I make them read. See, this is what you got to do here, right? You want to push the work, right? So, now, these kids are doing podcasts and TikToks with public officials, right? Because it's fun to them to see people held accountable. That's how we make it entertaining at the same time educational, right? So, I think what she's doing is she homeschools her kids, and she makes sure people comes up here, and she's going to make sure that Jason and whoever else that's not being listened to, freedom of speech, is, if these issues are addressed, right? This is what I'm invited here for. I'm going to sit, I'm going to record, I'm going to go back tonight, I'm going to get on Facebook, I'm going to let the community know what I thought of this city meeting. 9 o'clock, I got to let my dogs out, I got to eat. There's a lot of things that are going on. But we have to remember one thing, that this is for the people. That's what this is for. This is for the people. It's not about our own personal little petty stuff that's going on. We got to set that stuff aside. And if we're truly going to be this new best town, or what is the logo now? Love your city, what is the logo? This new thing that's going on?
Strong Town.
Strong Town? Then let's be a strong town. Let's stop playing the games. Let's stop the unequleness. I know about how it's unequal. It's very unequal here in this town, and it's the history of it. Let's correct all this stuff. We're here for it. Let's be here truly, not just here and say we're here for it, but let's correct it. And I'm going to hold everybody accountable. So, I'm going to go back to the people, and I'll make sure the people up, we've had first and second, we got empty seats here. I'm going to be, I'm talking to my network. Why was there empty seats? Why weren't you there? You're going to complain about something. Don't complain to me about what didn't happen, because I didn't see you sitting up there. I didn't see you sitting up there. If you needed a ride, you could have called me. I have insurance. I go pick people up. See, this is what we're about to start putting forward here in Marion, because we've got to make it, right? We've got to make it change. We've got to make sure that you guys listen to us and what we want, because you work for us ultimately. And this is what our children will respect us for, right? Because if we remain silent, right, we'll get trampled on. We'll get our rights stolen. People will just do what they've been doing, which is not listening to we, the people. So, I here thank, I want to thank Naomi, right? I want to thank all of you, and I want to thank all of you who are here. Let's work together to truly make this a better place, and then we won't have to have the negative commentary at each other like we don't like each other. We're supposed to be neighbors in the same town. That doesn't seem too strong to me, if we can cordially agree to disagree. Because let's not be petty. We don't have to be petty, because there's too much work that needs to be done. Too much. Trust me, I am still uncovering problems in the city of Marion back from 2010. And I'm talking about children being taken from good parents, right? I'm still uncovering this. This happens with our city, with our police, with our judges, with contracts, with the prosecutor. There's problems here. Major problems. And we need to work together and stop the nonsense, because that's the biggest problem, that we as adults can't work together. What you think the children are looking at us going, yeah, y'all can't do it? What you, what you expect out of the children if the adults can't get it together? We are public officials here. We're the public. Let's work together. And we might really be a strong town, not just in name.
Okay. Thank you. Any other matters? All right. We'll move on to committees. Oh, sorry.
Cody Higley, 1201 Township Road, 39 Caldonian. I just wanted to congratulate you guys on winning the title of strongest town. I mean, it's something that I think a lot of people were maybe a little bit skeptical going into it, but, you know, it was also impressive to see the community come together. And there has been a lot of positive things going on in Marion. But I do think that something that needs to be stressed when you're looking at moving forward and trying to motivate, maintain that motivation to keep people continuing to work toward making your city better, is to have that transparency, to have that greater sense of community and working together. So, I would highly encourage you, and it's important to those of us that live in the peripheral areas, Marion is where we come to eat, shop, you know, all that kind of stuff, work for a lot of us. So, your guys' present and future will impact ours directly. So, anything that's going to decrease that transparency and that awareness, highly encourage you to avoid it and take advantage of the momentum that you have going with something positive, like being the strongest town. So, thank you.
Okay. Next, committees. Ms. Lang, airports, lands of buildings?
There'll be an airport meeting, lands and building at 6:30 PM to discuss security at City Hall, the council committee and planning commission meeting.
Mr. R. Smith, Johnson, economic development?
6:35. Go over the CDVG block plan.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ratliff, legislature codes and regulations?
6:40. There's two items, the rules of council amendment proposals and also the city charter.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Ratliff, public debrief?
Nothing to call at this time.
Mr. T. Smith? Fourth Wednesday, 7 o'clock for your pretty gentlemen?
Yes.
Ms. Barstree, the sewers?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Prager?
Nothing at this time.
Actually, there's a rezoning.
Rezoning.
Yes, under zoning and annexation. So, let's see, what do we got?
45.
6:45, Mr. Prager? And finally, Ms. Lang?
There'll be no finance meeting on 5:5. The next finance meeting will be on 5:19. Old Business Reports and I believe Clark Schaefer and Hackett will be here to do a presentation at that meeting. And they are the company that we have contracted with to do our '22, '23, and '24 audits, or financial statements.
So, that's for the 19th.
Before we adjourn?
Yes.
So, is the goal to get someone from ODOT or CSX to come up at the next council meeting? Is that it?
The email chain I was a part of, I assume somebody was going to be here today. They're scrambling. It's well worded in those emails that this council's not liking this and not wanting to do it, so.
What I'm getting at is, are we going to have someone come Monday? Because if we are, let's make that our first item agenda, so they don't have the opportunity to leave.
You mean for council meeting or?
For committee.
Yeah, we talked about this for over 45 minutes of giving more time, so let's be efficient with the time we wasted to go another two weeks, and let's do this right.
Next council, now, next full council meeting, right?
In two weeks.
Yes. I was going to make sure, yes, they're weird. I'll make sure they have some exhibit or something that describes exactly what would happen at the intersection and with the lights and all that, so that they can explain all that.
Okay, so, council president, do we need to make a motion to change the order of our agenda? To make sure that that's first?
I was about to ask you, did you want to make sure that they?
I will make that motion if that's the procedure you want to follow.
Second.
You have a motion for Mr. Schaubert, and a second for Mr. Ratliff.
I'm unsure as to what exactly the motion is.
Just to move that to the first meeting of the evening.
Item one on the agenda.
Streets and sewers. The meeting number one at 6:30.
No, it'll be the next council meeting.
No, it's the council.
Full council.
Just to move it to number?
See, I don't know what it's on.
We don't even know. You segmented it, that's all I need.
Because we're expecting ODOT to.
Right. Because we can't put it in committee, because it's already before council. Because we can't put it in committee, because it's already before council.
One Jason.
All right, so, we have a motion.
Can they call the roll?
Yeah, I'll call on the second.
Mr. Barr? Yes. Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schauber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, we are adjourned at 9:9.